I have called to order this Monday, July 19, 2021, City Council meeting. All councilors are present. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that are adopted during the organizational planning meeting. Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council. Six, twenty-one, twenty-one, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
Thank you, sir. The very brief report tonight. Just wanted to give a brief update on the American Rescue Plan Act, the funds that will be coming to the city at some point later in the year. The funds have been allocated to the state, but the state has sent back to the federal government asking for more clarity on some of the restrictions related to those funds. So there's a delay in getting those funds out to the communities. But as soon as those answers are received, then the funding will be sent out. It'll be coming to us in two increments. And once we receive those funds, we have two years to commit the money to the issues that are the expenditures that fall within the parameters that the government will be providing us, and then three years to actually spend those funds. So the goal of this money is for more long-term spending and not so much, you know, here you have this money, spend it by December and just find ways to spend it. So the staff, I've been in contact with many of the staff members about this. We talked about it at our management team meeting for them to start coming up with ways that we can utilize these funds. And so we'll be gathering community input and also, obviously, the council. Once we have an idea of when we're going to get the money and start looking for ways to best utilize it to benefit our community. That's all I've got for tonight.
Any questions? All right. Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any committees? Counsel Phillips.
Lyons and I attended the Harbor Commission meeting. Things are going well. Little small problem with the diesel pump. Somebody's fixed that. Suggesting to sell ice next year. Boats are coming in. People are happy. Things are going well.
And still no dredging. No word.
Dredging?
Yeah, still no word on dredging.
No, 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 no. That'll be another 20, 30 years.
Yeah.
Other committee meetings. Counsel Kaplan.
I haven't attended a meeting, but I think that we should have a meeting with the Streetlight Committee. I'd like to set that up.
Manager Moser, is that something staff can work with the committee on?
Is there a specific agenda or concern?
Yes, the end of 179. It's a bear. It's almost impossible to get out.
Oh, you're talking with traffic lights?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The traffic lights.
Okay, so that, we are currently working on that issue. That's a do, as you're aware, it's a DOT involvement with any sort of lighting. And Jason has been in touch with the DOT. You may or may not be aware that our, this area DOT representative has recently retired, and they are in the process of finding a replacement for him. And once that replacement has been identified, then Jason has plans to engage with them. But we can certainly pull together a committee meeting to get everyone up to speed on that progress.
I think it's necessary before somebody gets killed at that intersection, so.
What committee?
Traffic light committee.
There's a traffic light committee?
Well, there's the streetlights, but I think this fall, does this fall under streetlights or under the roads?
No, streetlights.
Streetlights are.
Just a regular streetlights.
Yeah.
We do have a local roads committee that will be meeting, that's being set up. Maybe an update can be provided during that.
Probably.
So we'll get that, once that, once that's set up, it will be posted and everybody will, council will certainly know about it and the public will know about it.
Thank you.
Any other committees? Just, the Friends in Action, the YMCA, and the city are, have formed a committee to talk about, this is just to educate everybody, remind everybody in the community with the Moore Center of the Lease. It was intended for and designed so that it would house, that the Y is, holds the lease with the city, and Friends in Action was a tenant. And the goal was to have a senior center available there along with the programming of the Y, and the Y would run the facility. So COVID, as we all know, disrupted some of that. This committee has formed to, just to look forward in terms of where everything is headed. And they would like council representation. I've kind of signed up as a placeholder, but I wanted to check with the rest of the council to see if somebody wanted to be a part of that committee. Will be an ad hoc. Counsel Kaplan. Does anyone else have an interest? Then we'll assign the two of you to that committee. It'll be short term. It's really to just kind of look, look ahead. Thank you. All right. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the agenda where any citizens who would like to comment on any issue can do so. If it's on the, if an item's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time on that particular item. So at this point, I'll open it up for anybody that would like to speak. Seeing no one, we will move ahead to presentation of awards. So I'd like to ask Gary Saunders.
The City of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Gary Saunders in recognition of your 25 years of service to the Ellsworth Fire Department in your various capacities from volunteer firefighter to firefighter engineer to lieutenant to deputy fire chief to your current position as interim fire chief. Your devotion to duty and loyalty with the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth presented this 19th day of July, 2021.
Congratulations on that. But you can't retire with just that.
Someone said I was going to get a golden boot.
So with your retirement, this was added to Gary Saunders with deepest appreciation for your 27 years of distinguished and devoted service to the Ellsworth Fire Department. Your dedication and leadership contributed greatly to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth and the community at large. Paid-on call firefighter, 1994, career firefighter, 1996, lieutenant, 2011, deputy fire chief, 2016, interim fire chief, 1-2021 to 6-2021, fire and life safety educator, 1996 to 2016, firefighter of the year, 2010 and 2014. So on behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your service, but also the difference that you've made in this community. We really appreciate it.
And I know the schools and the kids will certainly miss that as well. All right, now I'd like to call up Chief Giro for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of councils. Tonight what we wanted to do is we wanted to involve you in a tradition within the fire service, which is a promotion. We conduct what is called a badge pinning ceremony. At this time, I'd like to call up firefighter Ken Lemoine. Counsel Hamilton. The badge pinning process, again, is a recognition for years of hard work and moving on to the next rank as a part of our fire department. Counsel Hamilton will step forward and will pin you with your gold badge. And I will have his wife step forward and complete the pinning process where she will pin his collar breasts on his uniform shirt. So for the members of the community and council, we'd like to present to you Captain Ken Lemoine.
Chief Giro, thank you for presenting that here and including us as part of that. All right. Unfinished business. The consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have no items under that? So that was, took care of that one? Yeah, but see? This is making you happy, Counsel Phillips. New business. Item nine, public hearing in action on the following business license applications. Madam Clerk, are all the applications in order? First is the Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743, 317 Hive Street for renewal of a city Class B license, victualler liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state club on premise with catering malt, spiritus, and vinus, Class One liquor license. Any councilors have any questions? Seeing none, that's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval of the Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, Mr. Chairman.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Fogtown Brewing Company, LLC, DBA Fogtown Brewing Company, 25 Pine Street for renewal of a city Class B license, victualler liquor and amusements. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approved the request of Fogtown Brewing for renewal of their licenses.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Jennifer Wing, DBA Peppers Pub Incorporated, 20 Waters Street for a new city Class C license victualler and liquor converted from a city Class B, remove the amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant lounge malt, spiritus, and vinus Class 11 liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Chairman, move approval of the request of Peppers Pub for renewal of their licenses.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Chase Jamaica LLC, 190 State Street for renewal of a city Class C license victualler and liquor and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV wine and malt liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Rockbound Management LLC, DBA Twin Hills cottages of Acadia, 210 Twin Hill Road for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Twin Hills cottages of Acadia request for renewal.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Melanie Omler-Fox, DBA Helen's Restaurant of Ellsworth, 55 Down East Highway for renewal of a city Class C license victualler and liquor and renewal of a state restaurant malt, spiritus, and vinus Class I, II, III, IV liquor license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
Have second. Any discussion?
Are they required to, everybody else puts down the totals for the gross. It's not a requirement? Okay, no discussion.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Daniel C. Potts, DBA Lakeside Cedar cabins, 397 Mariahville Road for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Any comments? I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the Lakeside Cedar cabins request for renewal.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 10, council order number 072100, request of the city manager to approve a settlement agreement for the property located at 99 Bangor Road. Manager Moser.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. So in your packet, you all have a letter I received with the offer to settle the debt to the property, 99 Bangor Road. And the settlement amount is less than the actual total owed for the property in back, back taxes, which is a result of foreclosure from 1994. The gentleman entered into a repick with the city. And at this point, I think that it's in the best interest of the city to settle the tax debt in the amount of $6,000. $700 as suggested in the settlement agreement. And I consulted with legal and been informed that the city has the authority, the council has the authority to accept such a settlement if you feel that the agreement has been met. And for the city to have a quick claim deed drawn up, putting the property back into the name of the 97-year-old gentleman who currently resides there.
Counsel Kaplan.
If I had my way, we'd settle for a dollar. Can we do something along those lines?
It's.
My, my understanding was that the, the portion that we're receiving was funds that were raised. So it's, it's not being paid by the individual. It's money that was donated on, on his behalf, and, and the difference is what he would have owed. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
And just to be clear, so the amount that was owed, the $6,700 is more or less half of the amount owed. But the property owner is now a 97-year-old World War II veteran, who was eligible for the veteran's exemption on the homestead exemption. He never applied for it.
Correct.
The amount of money that he would have saved over the years more than equals the other half. So I certainly would be in favor.
He, so he, those exemptions have both been applied to, to his current tax, taxes, and essentially have eliminated any need for him to pay taxes to the city. Based on those two exemptions. Now, the exemptions have varied over time, so it's, without going back through, and unfortunately, those, those exemptions are not retro. You can't apply them to previous tax debt. So it's unclear to know exactly, but it's safe to say that had he had those exemptions earlier on in the situation, then he may not be in the situation that he's in currently.
Counsel Kaplan.
I just wonder, you know, as a city, at what point does a person actually own their home? You know, every, every, you pay off your mortgage, but you know, here's a 97-year-old World War II veteran who, you know, based on the value of a home, is, is in debt to the city, even though he probably has no mortgage. And so he's probably not the only elder person in our city that's in a similar circumstance. And you've got to ask yourself, at what point does a person actually own their home? You know, if they don't pay the city, the city takes their property. And is there any kind of age limit that the city could look at? You know, if somebody's over the age of 85, should we even be taxing them? So that's just my perspective. I think that at some point, we, we ought to be giving our elders a break rather than taxing them.
Counsel Lyons.
The one thing I'd like to say is if somebody's having tax issues, they don't have enough money to pay or what have you, when they come in and talk to somebody, couldn't they tell them, well, are you taking advantage of this exemption and that exemption to try to help them through it? Because the way I've heard it is this man never knew that he could take advantage of. And he had talked to people numerous times in the past, I don't know who, and I don't even want to get into that. But nobody ever said, look, you can have a veteran's exemption, homestead exemption, and all that.
Yeah, no, I think if somebody came in today and came to the city and asked for help and guidance, then I'm 100% confident that our staff would provide them that.
Good.
I can't speak to what transpired in 1994 with this individual. Or even if those exemptions existed in 1994. So, but today, our staff here today, I'm confident that if citizens reach out and are looking for guidance, if there is guidance to be given, that our staff will provide that accurately to them.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the settlement of the repurchase agreement between the City of Ellsworth and Mr. Como for the sum of $6,700 and authorize the city manager to pursue the issuance of a quick claim deed for 99 Bangor Road to Mr. Como.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 11, council order number 072101, request of the finance director to award a contract for auditing services.
Good evening. Hopefully you have in your packets the bid proposal from RHR Smith and Company along with a copy of their cost proposal to conduct the audits for fiscal years 2021 through 2025. I think you're aware that our current auditor, who'd been with the city for better part of a decade, informed us in May that they were no longer able to continue to perform the audit. So in the middle of June, we put out an RFP to select new auditors. The deadline was last Thursday, and we received one proposal, which is the one you're seeing for you. And this is a reputable firm. They have extensive list of municipalities as clients throughout the state. I did speak to two of their references on Friday, gave very enthusiastic endorsements. I also have some personal experience of working with this firm previously, so would ask that you would consider approving them as for audit going forward.
Question just in terms of where this audit is for both the city and the school. Does the school board need to cast any votes at all?
No.
On this side? Okay.
And this is a five-year contract?
Yes.
With a static price? It's not going to increase each year?
No, that's correct. Same price.
Other questions?
It would obviously be nice to have more than one bid, but we can't control that. And an audit is required. It makes it very difficult for the city to access any kind of funding for any project without an audit, and we need to get that underway, so.
Mr. Chairman, move for all of the city managers to negotiate final terms when under a contract between the City of Ellsworth and RHR, RHR, Smith and Company for auditing services for fiscal years 2021 through 2025.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Awesome presentation for your first time, and it worked so well.
We'll get it in five years.
Item 12, public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter Four, Fire Prevention Codes and Ordinances. Manager Moser, do you want to lead it?
Well, I think that, I mean, we have been working on this subject matter since the last council meeting. And what you have before you tonight is some suggested recommendations for potential changes to that ordinance. And I'll turn it over to FIRE to explain what, what changes they're recommending at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. As Mr. Moser stated, this has been an ongoing process. We've had the public hearing back in June. We did the workshop on July 1st, and based on the recommendations and listening to some of the ideas, we have proposed an amendment, an addition of a subsection of Chapter Four with a minor subdivision exemption. The proposal is working with planning, and it basically, as in your packet states, shall the subsection, the subdivision shall be exempt from the section if fire chief finds that all of the following criteria have been met. I apologize. A, being all new lots in the proposed subdivision have frontage on a public street. B, existing water supplies for firefighting are sufficient to meet the needs of the proposal. And then you'll see where existing water supplies include an open, open water source. Maintenance and access shall be ensured by the applicant in accordance with Section 75 through 1. And then lastly, the proposal does not otherwise require connection to public water or the provisions of a sprinkler system or another onsite water supply for firefighting under any other city ordinance or adopted role, adopted. under any other city ordinance or adopted role, adopted code. Our recommendation is, is that we approve this. We feel that this is going to answer some of the questions that relate to small subdivisions. As we stated during the, the workshop, that the intent of a small subdivision doesn't necessarily create an added huge infrastructure to the city. We feel that giving that exemption will allow the developers or whomever owns that property to be able to sell their land without covenants. And that would allow property owners who are buying that to be able to go, to move forward with their housing without having that covenant binding that to a cistern, which is in agreement with the other lot owners, or adding a sprinkler system and incurring a larger cost. And the motion, what we've submitted to you is what we propose to be added to that.
Can you explain, I'm not sure I understand, B, existing water supplies for firefighters are sufficient to meet the needs of the proposal. What would that, what would that look like?
That would be mostly for us looking at what the available water sources in the area are, whether we have a dry hydrant or a fire hydrant nearby, whether we have an open water source, something that would be nearby in the area. Wouldn't necessarily be bound to the thousand feet for cisterns or something like that. So, kind of giving them a little bit more distance to an available water source. The current subdivision that's in question, it's more than a quarter of a mile away to the next available water source. And so, by allowing this exemption, that would give him the ability, or that developer, the ability to continue with their projects on that, on that land without putting covenants to it.
Does that language, though, leave it up to complete interpretation? Well, obviously on your part, since you're the person named here, but that, that changes with the person. It doesn't specify any distance, and it kind of makes that ordinance arbitrary based on the individual.
I think it would be something that we'd have to finish doing some clarification with planning as to those, those distances when they go in for approval for that subdivision. But I think with giving that exemption, that allows us some latitude to be able to make it more accessible to put in those subdivisions.
I do agree with you, Dale, with no set numbers or anything. It's pretty vague, and it is arbitrary. The other question I have here at the podium is, I see the letter from Inspector Canada. Mr. Hangy is in, but has he been authorized by the fire marshal to inspect?
Yes.
You got him to in a short period of time?
Pardon me, sir?
You got him to say yes in a short period of time?
I, I was able to do that.
I was surprised, but yeah. We had Oupenor send the paperwork through, and they approved it, so that he can go ahead with the inspections.
Counselor Kaplan.
I still don't like, like, right now, it, it's only four or fewer lots.
Correct.
But if somebody has six lots, and it's a small, it's not even a developer, it's just somebody who wants to subdivide their land, you're running into the same problem, where if they can't afford the fire hydrants, or they can't afford the cisterns, then they are obviously going to pass that on to the consumer, which, you know, Ellsworth is, is not a rich community. You know, some people have mentioned that Gorham does this. Well, Gorham's median income is seventy-one thousand dollars a year. Ellsworth's median income is fifty-four thousand dollars a year, which is five thousand dollars less than the state median income, and we're adding thirty thousand dollars on to the cost of construction for the average family. When we're talking about a city that's crying out for affordable housing. I just, I cannot wrap my head around that.
I cannot change the subdivision clarification, when it, where four, four or less being a minor, and five or more being a major, because that's through planning, that is not through the fire department.
Counselor Miller.
I, I agree with Counselor Kaplan, and I sent an email saying that if this is your only option just to go this far and only remove that or clarify that subdivision, that's really not enough for me. It's not even close enough for me. This is a bad ordinance.
Do you have a sprinkler system in your own home? I mean, I don't.
No, I'm right.
Most people don't.
I'm right.
Counselor Phillips.
I think the sprinkler system is probably a terrific idea, and I don't doubt, and I'm not going to argue that saves lives. But I do feel it's an expensive proposition, and that puts it on the cost of the homeowner. I think the cisterns aren't necessarily a wonderful idea, but at least with that, it spreads the cost amongst all of them instead of each individual. I'd be happy with removing the sprinkler portion of this ordinance. And if somebody wants to do it, let the homeowner do it, let it be their personal choice. And us as a city provide, if needed, water, the necessary water, and then in requiring that the cisterns be there in certain applications. At this point, it seems like the most, the easiest, the most logical approach we've got is the sprinkler systems have been nothing but contentious, I would say, through the years, and not utilized by reading what we've got in any of the documentation, because of the cost.
The cisterns are already an option, though.
I understand that. Leave those in there as an option. Remove the sprinkle requirement.
And when it comes back around, I guess my question is, are we going to revisit the sprinkler situation when the state, if the state adopts that, that ruling, a state mandate?
If the state does adopt it, then we're over there, but it's not a state mandate now.
So I looked at, I looked at some of the ordinances in other communities that have exempted, they have similar water supply, water access, but they exempted the, the minor subdivisions in their ordinances, and they did it outright. So in this case, this would leave, this would read, "A proposal for minor subdivision as defined by the Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-eight subdivision ordinance and/or Chapter fifty-six Unified Development ordinance shall be exempt from this section, period." And that's how those other communities did it. They just exempted the requirement to have any one of those three options. I'm personally okay with, with, you've got to draw a line in terms of minor, major, you know, major subdivisions. I don't think we want to go down the road of excluding major subdivisions of six or more. The information that we were presented, very few subdivisions are minor to begin with. So, cutting this off and saying that this does not apply to minor subdivisions would not be a big impact anyway, when we look historically in terms of the, the types of subdivisions we've had. And we know that the, the larger ones are generally more than six anyway, and those are where you have, you know, some of, and some of the bigger buildings require it anyway. So if you have apartment complexes, back-to-back, all of that, that's going to require a whole different threshold. So for me, I think just eliminating it, period, that, that section, exempting minor subdivisions from any of those three options would make more sense and would be consistent with some of those communities that have adopted these ordinances as well.
Counselor Blanchett.
We toss around the term minor subdivision, but just for the record, I just want to make sure that we're talking minor subdivisions that are residential in nature. Single, single homes. No apartments, no commercial.
Right.
Those fall underneath another ordinance, another section. Commercial and multi, multifamily dwellings fall under as something else. It's mandated that they be sprinkled.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Lyons.
My thoughts about this was the sprinklers expensive. Also, these tanks, I just got showed a bid. One of these tanks was forty-eight thousand dollars. Why couldn't we put one on the subdivision? There's only going to be one house burning at a time, I'm sure. They're not going to need two or three of them to put out a fire. That would cut down a lot of costs also.
The requirement is one for every thousand feet.
For the City of Ellsworth.
Yes.
Right, so do away with that. Go with one tank on the subdivision, maintained by everybody on that subdivision. If there's ten people, it's going to cost them, you know, forty-eight hundred bucks a piece to get it put in, and they all pay the price to maintain it. And it should be ample water to put out a fire.
I think that would depend on the size of the subdivision, though. If you're looking at ten one-acre lots, that probably would work, but the fire hoses do have a set length. So if it's, I think that's why they have the thousand-foot increment, because of the length of the fire hoses. But, you know, and then looking at lot size, I mean, I think that minor versus major should also consider lot size. If they're less than one acre on six or ten, or whatever the number is, I think that that could be called a major subdivision. But if they're five-acre lots, and there's ten of them, I, I still wouldn't consider that a major subdivision, because they're spaced far enough apart.
The goal with the changes that are made, that are in front of you, was to keep it consistent with the land use ordinance in the city. So, it's, that's how the land, the land use ordinance defines a minor as opposed to a major subdivision. So for consistency's sake, that's, that's where the four or less comes from. And there are no restrictions or size requirements there. So, that's just where that, that information came from. And I did, I did also want to just touch on the, you know, you, Dale, you, you made reference to this being, this effort, and the wording being left to interpretation. And I think that's exactly why our ordinance is as specific as it is, is because it takes away that interpretation. It takes away somebody arbitrarily deciding whether there's sufficient water source or not. By putting it specifically in the ordinance, you have these three options. You either hook up to town water with a hydrant, you put in a cistern, or you, or you sprinkler your homes. It gives our developers clear and concise guidance as to exactly what they need to do in order to get their project through the planning board and be able to put, put their project forward. It also provides them, right out of the gate, and so they can budget for it, finances. They know exactly what it's going to cost them, because they know going into it, okay, they've got a, a major subdivision, they're going to need a ten-thousand-gallon cistern. They know that going in, they know the cost, it's built-in cost. Before they even come forward with the project, they know exactly what that cost is going to be to that developer in order to bring forward with the, with the development. So, these, I think, are things that support the need for us to have specific options for our developers going into it, because it makes their job easier, it makes their development go more smoothly, and it doesn't have, come forward to the planning board with their interpretation. They think they have enough adequate water for fire prevention, but then the fire chief decides that they don't. So then it creates, you know, friction and animosity between staff and, and developers back and forth. And then ultimately, the planning board's going to have to be the ruling board to decide whether there's adequate water supply. And this takes away all that guesswork. And it says, "These are the parameters that you need to fall within. The developers know going in what the costs are, and they can make, you know, make the numbers work based on their knowledge of what it's going to cost, or not."
You know, another piece of this is, ordinances that have a purpose, and then to let them just kind of dissolve. I happen to live in a community where the fire ponds, that was a requirement, and those don't work anymore. So, so we have, we have homes all over this community where, on the front end, the ordinances are supposed to have some meaning, and then they, they dissipate. And all that does is add burden and cost, and doesn't follow through with the true meaning of this, of, of the ordinance. So I, I, I think the scrutiny of it is really, from that perspective, I agree with you, Counselor Kaplan, around cost. Certainly for a minor subdivision in the scenario that we heard, that we've heard before about the type of homes and the cost that would be added to a small subdivision. It's just, it makes it impossible to, to sell the lots. And then my question is, does it really serve a purpose, other than complying with an ordinance? And I come back to, I don't think it does. Personally, I think it does in a larger subdivision, where that does afford that protection. But for these minor subdivisions and those examples that we've heard over the last few times, I think we're trying to just, we're forcing a, we're imposing it on the small, minor subdivisions simply because it exists as an ordinance, not because it's really going to serve much of a purpose, and especially if the property can't be sold. And that's just historical, if you look at where we've been as a community. So, I think by, I, I think personally exempting minor subdivisions is the most appropriate pathway. It doesn't totally eliminate it. It keeps it in place for those larger subdivisions. And minor subdivisions are no, there's no difference than somebody purchasing a single plot of land and putting a house on it and not having to have any kind of sprinkler or water system, water supply. There's no difference in my mind when you get to that, that degree, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable with your decision. That sounds reasonable.
Counselor Miller.
I still don't like it. Single-family dwellings, we're still punishing these people. It's still going to increase the price of the houses in that area. And I, and you, you said the other day in the planning board meeting that "I can't go force people to put a sprinkler system in their house." And I don't think the city should force people to put a sprinkler system in their house. You know, or, or a cistern in their neighborhood. And why? Why, why are we doing that? If we got rid of this entire ordinance, there are state regulations that cover all of this, or they're not?
I don't know, I'd have to look. I know there's, we have stuff in NFA that we follow. I know that there's scrutiny around that as far as who's behind it and what's on, who's on the board. But where the state has adopted it as a rule of law, as a fire inspector and as a firefighter, I have to enforce those rules that are set forth by the Fire Marshal's Office through the state, and one of them being NFPA eleven forty-two, which derives a equation in there that gives us the, like, if we took a home on Neville Shore or wherever, we'd take the square footage of that home, we'd take it and put it in that equation, it tells us how many gallons of water it actually should take to put out that home if it's fully engulfed. And that's one of the, and the reason why we have the, have the ten-thousand-gallon cistern as a minimum standard is because of that, because of the time, if we're out in these rural areas, from that, it gives us enough time for what we have for water on our trucks, for the manpower that we have, plus what we can do with that ten-thousand gallons before our mutual aid companies come in with a tanker. Then we can set up water shuttle, and then we can start utilizing those static water sources that are around, such as the lakes and the ponds that we have access to, and then we can start actually effectively fighting the fire. What we have on our trucks is not going to come close to touching a fire, or let alone give us, it's going to give us just enough to get through the door, maybe do a search of a house if we're lucky, to, to go search for victims if there is any, and then get back out. And then we're going to stand there and wait for mutual aid to show up while the house is burning. This, this whole covenant, it's all put in by NFPA eleven forty-two for the urban and suburban developments. That's why we have that in place, to be able to, so that way us as firefighters are insured that when we're going into that fire, we have a hose that is fully charged with water to protect ourselves and protect whoever we're getting out. I understand it's not the best situation, the best scenario for cost and stuff like that, but if we didn't do that, we're not going to have enough water on our trucks to sit there and go even do an initial attack on a house, let alone go do a search of a house. By having that water source or having the sprinklers there as an added water source, it gives us a chance, as firefighters, to go in there and either protect the lives of the, protect, protect the lives, or protect the property in itself, which are our two main things that firefighters do.
Counselor Kaplan.
So if you have a subdivision that was created fifteen years ago, and then they add it on to it this year, the first twenty homes would not be subject to this, and you still have the same scenario.
So with that being said, we can't sit there and enforce. If there's already a subdivision and HOA actually established, if they add on another five into that subdivision, they fall under that, what's in place now for the HOA. If they create a new subdivision, brand new, then they fall under the new guidelines and restrictions that we have in our ordinance, and that's set forth in NFPA, and that's also set forth by the planning office, then they fall by that.
So what do the first fifteen houses do?
If they're beyond, if they're before this ordinance?
Yeah.
Then they don't do anything.
Exactly. And so what's the difference between the first fifteen houses and the last five houses? It's still the same road, right?
That the subdivision was already prior established to the ordinance that was set in place in two thousand eight. in place in 2008.
So I still don't like this ordinance. I think it increases costs and it creates a barrier to homeownership. And I honestly believe that, you know, with the NFPA, you do have the fox guard and the hen house. You've got the people that sell the sprinkler systems on the board, the people that sell the fire equipment, the people that sell the pumps, they're the ones that are making this recommendation. The people that sell the cisterns, they're all on the board that made this recommendation. And I think that, you know, if, if you have an organization that's making recommendations, they should have unbiased, non-interested parties making these recommendations. And it says on the NFPA website that these are voluntary.
Yes.
Unless your municipality makes a law.
Right.
These are voluntary recommendations.
And not only that, but the state has adopted these as rule of law for all of the NFPA codes that are on their website that are listed out.
So why is the, why is the state of Maine not demanding it?
What, the sprinklers?
The sprinklers and the cisterns and, and the hydrants.
They actually, the hydrants are actually in there. The cisterns are, the cisterns and the sprinkler systems are up to the local ordinance as to what they want to sit there and to be able to provide what they feel is adequate fire protection or water protection for those areas.
So that goes back to it being voluntary?
Until something happens, and then it becomes, then it doesn't. The NFPA has derived around, something happened, somebody died, somebody got hurt, and so they come and they form these committees and they put these new, establish these new NFPA rules, and they put them into place because something happened. They're more of a reactive than they are a proactive. And with what they have is, is that they give us guidelines and give us a, a way to be able to come back to our local ordinance and sit there and establish what we feel for what it, for us, for the city, town, or whatever, that we feel that would be necessary for the, for adequate fire protection.
Well, it's easy to make ordinances and recommendations when you're not the one paying for it. It's the homeowner that's going to be the one paying for it, and they can't afford it. They, they just, people are screaming about housing affordability in this city, in this area, and to create these kinds of expenses.
I understand that, and I can't do anything about that. I'm not a contractor, I'm not building these homes or these subdivisions, so I can't, I can't do anything about that. And when they come to planning board, we make every available effort to try to help them in any way and, and not necessarily cutting safety, but to help them cut costs or help them if they don't need to put a 20-foot road in, we try to help ease that in a certain way to sit there and be like, okay, maybe here we can restrict this a little bit. So then they cuss a little bit of cost for them here. Here, let's not do this, let's do this instead, that's not cutting safety again. We can sit there and try to help cut the cost a little bit here and there. But there are certain things that are set forth that are beyond my, beyond our ordinance that are in the NFPA codes that say you shall have a minimum of 20 feet of road width. But then right below it says that the HA has the right to sit there and to reduce that if necessary. So things like that we do do in the, for my position and with the planning office. We try to help these developers, try to find ways to be able to bring down their costs on certain things. But on this, on certain safety measures, it says you shall. And when it says you shall, it means you will. We don't have, we can't leeway from that, it's in there of cutting the cost on that for them.
But as far as the sprinklers go, I mean, right now the most, the most cost-effective, modest, modest income homeowner entry is manufactured home and mobile home. And if somebody purchases those for a subdivision, basically it's delivered, put together, and then now they have to take down the sheetrock to install the sprinkler system, which is going to be more than $30,000 just for the sprinkler system.
Well, that's not necessarily true. They can have where they're manufacturing the homes, if they're saying they're doing in Pennsylvania. There, they can have the rough-ins done, and they have to coordinate with local people on the, on the ground there to have the, to have the rough-in inspections done. Then they get here, and then once everything's tied together, then they do their final flow in the house, once the house is all put together, and then they get their certificate of occupancy, and then...
But the rough-in can't be done without the Upanor inspector approving it, right?
Not, not, he's not the only one, he's just for our local area for around here. They have others through other states, and Upanor itself can send representatives to wherever they need to, to sit there and do these inspections.
And how long is that going to increase the time to delivery of this house while somebody's still renting and now has a mortgage on the house?
Well, I don't think they'd have a mortgage on the house until the house was actually set and they were actually living in it.
So...
In any case.
Counselor Miller, I, I hear, I hear your concern around, that you're expressing. The, the one concern that I have with the larger subdivisions is the unintended consequence of the potential. If you think about, your example, Counselor Kaplan, around, you know, if you have five acres in between 10 homes, you can go the other way. And that, that's the, one of the concerns I have with, that a developer could come in and build homes right on top of one another where there's a huge potential of risk and, could spread very quickly, and then, and could get around having that kind of scenario around having some water supply. So for me, it's, it's, it's that balance of trying to find something that doesn't create that scenario, which could very easily happen. Once, once, if we remove that and that criteria is gone, that opens it up for these other potential worst-case scenarios. And, and so I think we have to keep in mind some of that and try to find that balance of, of balancing the cost with safety and, and create, so we don't create a situation that we, unintended consequence that we don't want to see happen in the community. Counselor.
I agree with everything that you mentioned. I also agree it's, there's a lot of cost involved, and the inconsistency bothers me as well. We're only one of seven communities, is that correct, that requires the cisterns or the sprinklers?
So each community has different set, different guidelines. I think the other day I reached out, and I think I was up to 13 for the state, and most of them are bigger rural communities that actually have these, have some sort of ordinance established for water sources, whether if it's a fire pond, which Herman has. I know Gorham does all sprinklers for all new residential period, there's no, they had no leeway on that. Portland, South Portland, Farmington, Sanford, those are a few of the other bigger areas that actually have something in place as far as a cistern, hydrant, or sprinklers as an option, they give them, or they have just one of those three things. And I think with us having, and having three options gives the developer that, that choice to figure out which one they would like to have. Instead of us forcing their hand to tell them, you got option A or option B, and, or just option A, and basically forcing them into that.
So in, in a community our size, so say Brewer or Waterville, I'd be interested to see what their ordinances are regarding this type of...
Yep, I can get that to city manager to...
Because if we're, if, if we're adopting ordinances that are much stricter than other communities, I, I just don't, I don't feel that it's necessary in this case. If it's not state law and we're doing, I understand the safety, the life safety portion and the firefighter safety, I get, I do get all of that. But I just, that's the one thing I keep getting hung up on, is that we're one of only a few, a handful in the state, so.
I would also like to add, this is the third time in a public meeting that we've had this discussion. We have not had one other developer come forward and echo, echo this as a problem, echo this as a, a, something standing in their way of developing in Ellsworth. We've had a significant amount of development over the last 20 years in the city of Ellsworth, and it continues. We have a full agenda for our TRT tomorrow. So the development continues. We haven't had any other developers come forward and say, this is standing in our way of developing cost-effective housing in the city of Ellsworth. And so I, I just think that that speaks to the fact that, again, the developers who have developed, who have been working in the city of Ellsworth have appreciation for the fact that we give them a clear roadmap as to how to get their projects done and do it in a manner that's, that's cost-effective, as cost-effective as we can assist them to be and timely.
I would argue that this type of ordinance, though, goes in favor of a larger developer with deeper pockets as opposed to maybe a smaller developer who would like to do something but knows that these are barriers to start with and doesn't even try.
But if we introduce the minor, which is what's on the table for tonight, that's going to provide that opportunity for those smaller developers to come in and do it more cost-effective, but still ha, offer that level of protection and, again, that guidance for those bigger developers who want to come in and build the bigger developments, which run the risk of houses that are more compact, closer together, and a fire in one of those developments could be catastrophic.
And again, the, the ordinance has no logic when it comes to lot size. You know, this is, like I said, it's for a five lot, five acre lot or a 10 acre lot, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, the stackland, packham, close units. It has no clarification as to the, the risk to damage to neighboring properties whatsoever. It's, it doesn't make sense to me to require the same ordinance for somebody who lives 10 acres away versus somebody who lives 50 feet away.
But this is just one ordinance. So there are other building codes, there are other things that come into play when you're, when you're building a subdivision, when you're building homes, that are not addressed in this ordinance. This ordinance is strict, is strictly dealing with fire protection. So there are answers to your questions. I don't have them because they're not part of this ordinance, and then, and that's not really the discussion that we're having. But I can tell you that we have had projects come forward where houses were feet apart. And that type of development, again, not dictated by the fire code, but that type of development is a potential in the future. And if you have a large one where houses are only a few feet apart from each other, five, 10 feet apart, and one of those houses catches fire and we don't have adequate water supply, we have limited resources as far as fire protection goes at all, as far as our fire service goes and our mutual aid resources. So we're already fighting an uphill battle, and then if we don't have any adequate water supply, you're just adding additional barriers to our firefighters being able to protect property of our citizens and protect life, which is their, is their first goal.
Mr. Hengy.
Good evening, I'm retired Inspector Mike Hengy. If you told me I'd been here six months after I retired, I'd have told you you were crazy. However, I have a couple answers for your, to, to your question, Counselor Kaplan, concerning subdivisions that exist and then new subdivisions that come in. I can count basically two major subdivisions that existed and then were extended. And at that time, the developer initially thought, or initially on the planning board wanted, decided to have the homes sprinkled. It came out that, that they didn't want to do that, so they changed, and they put in underground cisterns. One is out off of Bridge Twin, the other one is off of the Christian Ridge Road, two big subdivisions. We have a developer that's right here that has a set of apartments, that built several apartments, and the last, I think it was the last one that you built, you ended up sprinkling it, right?
Yep.
So he's got several buildings, but only one of them are sprinkled, based upon not only ordinance but fire codes. So it had, precedence has been set that that has happened in the past in the city of Ellsworth. And we do have developers that have done that. Did they do it happily? Probably not. But they realized that they needed to have something there for fire protection. The, the idea of the fire protection for the cisterns basically is two or threefold. Number one, it helps, it's a life safety system to get people out of a home, we all understand that. The other thing, as, as Manager Moza talked about, if you have a fire in one home that's close by to the other and you have an exposure, now you have two fires in two home, two, two separate homes. I bring, if you, if, if you go back in your history and you look at the fire of the city of Ellsworth and how that progressed and how that migrated, that's an exact thing that happened. It went from one building to the next building, to the next building, to the next building because of a lack of water supply. And the city of Ellsworth burnt to the ground. The other aspect of this is that it's used for forest fire or wildland fire. And in these areas, there is a lot of wildland. And if you get a fire in one of these places and it starts to grow and, and move along, you could impact more than one home. And with a 10,000 gallon tank, that's not a whole lot of water. So the, it's a threefold, it's, it's actually a three-phase type of thing as far as the underground cisterns are concerned. It's not just one. I, I understand it's the cost, but as was said, when a developer comes to the planning board or to the TRT or whatever, they know upfront what that's going to cost them. They know upfront what they're going to have to do. And they make that decision. We're not making them make that decision. Article seven, section five, I believe it is, with the sprinklers and the cisterns, was put there for those three purposes and those three things in mind. So that, that's basically the history behind that is for those three aspects. When we start looking at lot size, I believe there's a minimum lot size for a home, okay? And, and they have to build certain feet away from the property line, okay? 15?
Depends on...
Okay, it depends. So if one home builds 15 feet from the property line and the other home builds 15 feet from the property line, heaven forbid that they should do that anyway, you have an exposure process. Can we keep them from building it from there? No. They can build their home wherever they want to on that piece of property. And we just need to have the fire protection to protect that. That's what we're looking at. Question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
This ordinance still hurts small businesses, still hurts the single-family dwelling housing. It sounds like we need to change another ordinance where you're 15 feet apart, just get rid of this one. I don't, I don't, I don't like this, I don't like this ordinance at all. Look at, let's say if you were going up 179 and you're in Ellsworth, why would you pay more for a house in Ellsworth than right across the town line? And then you tell me you can't even fire protect it, and then I have to put my own sprinkler system or cistern in it? That doesn't even make sense to me. That's crazy.
Any more comments before I open the public hearing?
Probably. After three sessions of this, we've heard all the input from our staff, we've heard discussions amongst ourselves, we probably should hold the public hearing, close it, and let's talk amongst ourselves and decide what we're going to do.
So this is a public hearing, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that would like to speak on this topic, may do so.
Good evening, Christopher Dur. Again, Upanor Fire Sprinkler System Installer and apparently developer of a three-lot subdivision on the Happy Town Road. Sent quite a bit of information to all the councilors and city staff. I don't know if I had time to review that or not. I apologize for getting that out as late as I did. I wanted to make sure my numbers were accurate and have, you know, the quotes that I went out and researched and got on my own. And unfortunately, some of those come in a little bit later than I had hoped, but they are all there. You should have received those emails this afternoon, so if there's any questions on any of those numbers or anything. I was also given a, from both contractors on the tanks, what it takes to install them, everything that's involved in that process. And just, let me see, I laid out quite a bit in the email, so if there's any questions on any of those topics, I'd be more than happy to discuss that more. Couple other points, on the manufactured and mobile homes that come from out of state, the inspections still need to be done in the state of Maine. That's Maine State Fire Marshal's rule. Maine, again, is the only state that requires the inspections we require. On the plan set I get from Upanor, it clearly states for the one inspection, the flow test, it is not required for NFPA 13D. And yet we're still required to do it in the state of Maine. We're required to have the, the RMS representative. The project I'm working on currently, all sprinkler permits are subject to final authority by the Fire Marshal's Office, who specifically put on this permit that they will be present... by the Fire Marshal's Office, who specifically put on this permit that they will be present for that final inspection. So now, to coordinate inspections, it's between Inspector Mike Hingey, who's come back thankfully part-time. Fire Department, whoever, you know, Inspector Canavan, or the Fire Chief, would like to be there, a video call if it should be necessary with the Upanore representative, and also now the Fire Marshal's Office. So it's quite a process. Just, we, it was kind of touched on, on the minimum lot size, but the out-of-town lots, I believe are 40,000 square feet, and that number might be slightly less. I'd have to look it up, but the lot sizes are larger out of town, so your smaller lot size is in-town. You know, so that's, you know, your, your smaller tenth of an acre lot, or quarter acre, you know, small, small piece of land, it's not, you know, the parcels that are out of town. And then also on, you know, the options that are available for the fire protection, you either have the fire sprinkler system requirement, which I can attest to has driven buyers away from the lots. I spoke with both the contractors, I gave the quotes for the tanks, because they decided to put those tanks in after having fire sprinkler requirement, because of a negative reaction from buyers. And they also have two separate other subdivisions that are currently mandated to be sprinkled, that they will be coming back to change, to have it so the fire cisterns will be installed, if that is what the ordinance would require.
When you say mandate, they chose that option, right? Is that what you, they, they had the choice initially?
Right. I mean, again, it was, you know, it was an upfront, it was. Yeah, no, I mean, it is a choice, but again, that is a large upfront cost, so if you, you know, are not looking to put a lot of money into it at, at the beginning, you can decide to put the fire sprinkler requirement on, and give yourself a couple of years, feel it out, see what the market is like. Obviously, there was a negative reaction to, to that, and then come back and decide to put the tanks in. And when you, you know, are in that business, the cost is going to be, you know, less for them to do it than it would be for me. Interestingly, I was reading on the option two for the fire cistern tanks, and the subdivision I did on the Happy Town Road, there was some question on how many tanks would be required. On the face of it, it seemed like there would only be one, because it was less than 1,000 feet of road frontage. But if you read in the ordinance, at not more than 1,000-foot intervals, measured along vehicular access and travel routes throughout the development, I didn't have any roads through the development, only driveways. So would each individual driveway be considered an access point that you need to measure 1,000 feet off of? Or are we going to measure just road frontage, because it doesn't state road frontage? So there, again, like I said, there was some discussion, and obviously, I didn't have the means to put in one of these tanks for those lots, it just was completely, you know, wasn't feasible to do that for that location for what the lots are worth. But again, that was a conversation that was had, you know, what are we going to require for the fire tanks? So I think, like I said, I just wanted to clarify that part, and I said, after being able to, to do a lot of research and everything, come up with those quotes for those fire tanks. Also, in the email I sent out, it talked about the savings on homeowners' insurance, and I spoke with a local State Farm branch, Jeff Buzzell. State Farm offers a 7% annual premium discount. The average premium in Ellsworth is about $1,000. So you're going to save about $70 a year to put in a $30,000 system. It will, the house, it will never pitch over 400 a year before it will pay for itself. So that incentive isn't there. That, you know, that just, just doesn't pan out. And like I said, I, you know, tried to attach all the quotes for all the various house plans, so we can get kind of a perspective for not, you know, just a large waterfront home, but also what, just a simple three-bedroom, two-bath mobile home would cost. And again, the process involved with that, to install it, because they are installed on the sidewall, they're not installed on the roof, so now you're removing the walling, the wall paneling, trying to run the tubing, and...
So I want, I just want to say thank you for, you provided the council with a lot of information, and you did a lot of research, and I know you obviously have a vested interest as a developer, as installer of the systems, so there's that obvious thing. But, but with that said, I found the information you provided to be as objective as you possibly could, you, you provided it from outside sources, and it was helpful. So I appreciate the time you took to pull that together and share that with us, and...
Like I said, I wanted to bring, like I said, I want to bring the, you know, full picture, and, and, you know, make sure what I'm presenting is accurate. I think that's my responsibility, if I'm going to take your time. The least I can do is make sure everything that I'm presenting is as accurate as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Miller.
I've, I've heard some, some other people saying that the numbers are misrepresented, and I'm wondering where that all came from. I think that Inspector Canavan was one, and, and the city planner. When I watched the planning board meeting, it came up that, oh, no, they're over inflating the numbers, and on the costs. So you're accurate with your cost analysis that you had here. I saw a bid from Arab Jordan for one tank, $48,000. That's correct, right?
That is correct. And also, I can, like I said, I can speak on behalf of them as well, that having that ordinance has hindered, like I said, the sale of those lots. And it has, you know, definitely added expense, you know, what that's going to increase the lot cost for people looking to move to Ellsworth. You know, again, they're moving away from that to go to the fire tank, because that's the only option that is left. If you decide and have access to the public water, and you run the water main, and you install the hydrant, that's an upfront cost, but it adds value to those lots, and the city will then also take over responsibility for the line and the hydrant. You're responsible for this tank. You know, whatever required maintenance is involved, the homeowners are responsible forever. You know, and that's another added cost. And also on, on those quotes, that, that didn't involve the cost to, to fill the tank, and what, you know, 10,000 gallons of water cost, I don't know the exact water source, but I would assume it would have to come from a fire hydrant. So whatever the city charges per gallon for water, that'd be another added expense on top of that quote. And again, I think from my perspective, you know, I agreed, you know, fully, you know, when you spoke about the minor subdivision part, and, you know, having that removed, but as a minor subdivision, what options did I have if I wanted to divide that and make two more lots? I did not have access to the public water, so I couldn't have hydrants. And to install an underground tank, even if it is just one, at 45 to $48,000, I would be paying people to take the land. You know, that doesn't include my cost to develop, you know, and have the site plan done up. It was an over 40-page application just to make three lot, uh, two additional lots out of one existing lot. So on that end, there's another discussion too, on the complexity of even doing a minor subdivision, and everything that's involved with it. And I think that deters a lot of people.
As for another day.
And, you know, just looking through, there really hasn't been a lot of development in Ellsworth for land subdivisions that haven't been waterfront. Again, I mean, we can look, I think there was 13?
60, over 60 lots compared to about 5.
Correct. But if we look at the number of subdivisions, I mean, we had, it was one that was four lots, one that was seven lots, one that was 14 lots. So there hasn't been, again, a lot of development in that. On that chart that was presented, like I said, a lot of that is covered under other building codes, and was commercial multifamily. You know, so that has been where the development has been in Ellsworth.
So are you, are you wrapping up with, with your?
Yes, sure.
I just want, if you had any other important points, I think you certainly have made it...
I think, like I said, you know, I tried to put everything in the email, so I'm, you know, if everyone had a chance to review that, and, you know, any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those, but otherwise, that, that should be it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Jana Richards, Economic Development Director. I just want to speak to the level of development in the city of Ellsworth, because I don't want there to be this misconception that the reason that there hasn't been development is because of this ordinance. Actually, in 2008, we had a recession, if you remember correctly, and there is the last, in, in terms of trends, the last thing to bounce back after an economic recession are land subdivisions, both within the urban core and out into the rural areas. And in fact, the rural areas are largely more impacted than the urban core, which is why you will see over the last six years, we've had over 245 units that are multifamily units built within the urban core. So there is, there are development trends that are a direct impact of a recession in 2008, not the ordinance that was passed in 2008. And we can go back and pull numbers and data that reflect that, if you wish, but I don't want there to be a misconception that the development in Ellsworth is impeded strictly by this ordinance. Maybe it was a variable, but I can tell you right now that economic factors that are bigger than just this ordinance were at play. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Want to speak? All right. Then I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. And before we jump into our discussion, I just want to get clarity so that we know what we're doing the best we can, is that can you clarify the ordinance process in terms of the change of process? Because I'm a little unclear about that. What we have before us is a proposal to change an ordinance, which requires certain notification timing. If we deviate from that, if, if somebody wants to present a different motion, is there a different process that we need to go through to do that? Can we do that this evening, or do we have to postpone that for a future meeting because we have to advertise for it? I'm just not clear on that process.
My understanding is that it would have to be, for final adoption of the new wording would have to be postponed to a future meeting, and the wording would have to be put alongside the previous wording, it would have to be subject and posted for community review, and then brought back in August for a final adoption vote by the council. Is that accurate, Heidi?
Hi. We advertise amendments, so I don't know.
Typically, the council would make recommendations to, if you wanted to deviate away from what is in front of you, you would make those recommendations as to what you would want to see. Staff would go back, make those changes, and then re-present at another meeting, so that when the public reviews what's out, what, what is out there, that the council is considering they have it in front of them at home, so they can review it and then provide feedback on that as well.
Okay, thank you. So just to restate it so we're all clear, we have a proposal, it's just, it's a proposal at this point, from staff, of saying, this is a recommendation that they're making for the existing ordinance. We can take action on it, we can leave it alone, we can, so that's, that's what, that's one part, part A. Part B is that if there is other action that you would like to take, and there's agreement on that, that would go back to city staff to, to put it together, post it, and it would come back on our next agenda item for a formal vote. So tonight, we are not able, if, if we go in that direction, we will not be changing any ordinance if there's another proposal that is supported by the council. So we have two options, either take action on this one, not take action on this one, create new language, agree to that, and, and then it goes forward, or we reach an impasse and nothing changes.
What if we wanted to just nix the whole thing and build from the ground up at a later date?
Well, if you, if you want, are you saying you mean nix the, the existing ordinance? Then that would be, that would be the recommendation, that there would have to be agreement here. If there's agreement, then it would go back to city staff to, to do that. That would be the change, and they would basically strike everything out, that would get posted, and then we would formally vote on it next meeting.
But can I just add, we're not talking about the entire chapter four.
No.
We're talking about a subsections to that ordinance. So when you say the ordinance, that's the entirety of chapter four. You have to be very specific as to the subsection if you were to want to strike it entirely.
Should be section 7.5, right?
But doing that, again, just providing guidance, doing that opens the door for any development that's underway to come forward and proceed with no guidance for any sort of fire protection, including any major subdivisions that may be in the works between now and whenever we were able to come forward and get some changes that the board was accepting.
I don't think it's no fire protection, there's still state regulations above.
Right.
Yeah, it's not no fire protection.
Right, there's still state regulations that everybody has to follow.
So the requirement, which is what Mr. Dur provided, which he referenced in Title 30, municipal and counties, and municipal subdivisions, is sufficient water. The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of that subdivision. So that's a pretty vague statement, and again, it opens the door to our staff having to make that decision in the event of these subdivisions, and without any clear guidance, and it makes it difficult for developers, and makes it contentious between staff and potential developers to come up to an agreement as to what exactly answers that call.
So, Counsel Philps.
Oh, sure, why not?
Are you going to make a motion? Because if you are, I need to ask a question first.
Relax. All of a sudden, you're on top of it, whoa, relax. Yeah, we've been debating this back and forth, and I, at first, I thought, let's take the sprinkler system out of there, but then again, leave it, leave it as an option. I do, and Bob, I see where you're coming from, but there is a need for a water supply, that, outside of that, and a larger subdivision outside of this, of the city proper and that, I do think we need to be responsible and have some type of water supply. The open source is iffy at best. The fire department's regular routine of testing didn't happen, so the no-syllable don't work, that's another issue. But if we do with the cistern, there's a better chance that it does work when needed. I do think if we're building a larger subdivision outside of the city, water supply, there should be something in there. So, now I got something in my mind, leave in the other one, so if somebody decides they want to do sprinklers, their choice, leave the cisterns in, maybe change the distance. As far as the minor subdivision, I think I like your idea with the exemption. The wording is in here, go for a proposal for minor subdivision, as defined by the Elsworth Code of Ordinances, chapter 28, subdivision ordinance end or chapter blah, 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 shall be exempt from this section. That's it, finished. So exempt all, instead of the other subjective wording in there after that point, which makes it arbitrary. So exempt minor subdivisions. Now, those would be my two minor changes in this. This ordinance as it stands, I won't vote for.
So my question, because I want to make sure that the worst thing we could do as a council is to take action on an ordinance and do it incorrectly, because that will... a council is to take action on an ordinance and do it incorrectly, because that will set up every developer and every, it will hold things up in court, it will be a mess. So, I want to make sure that we handle this in the way that is, it needs to be handled. And so, that's where I want to make sure that I have clear guidance and understanding around the fact that if we change this, or make recommendations to change it, do we take a vote in terms of whether we're in agreement to that, or not? Is that getting out in front of it? That's what I'm not really clear on, in terms of the recommendation to the staff to say, we would like this changed. Do we do a straw vote? And any insight?
I think at this point, you're going to vote for this ordinance is more than likely not going to pass. Then you need to poll us all and decide what we need to do, work the wording out, give it to staff, so they know what they're doing, so we can't keep beating it back and forth, bouncing the ball around. Staff's making recommendations. Policy set by council. We don't have to agree with your recommendations. That's just the way it is, and that's on our back, not yours. But you make recommendations to the best of your ability, we're going to look at it, we're going to make our own decision. So, at that point, I'd say if you want to call a vote for this, I'd call for a vote, kick the thing, and then we can have a quick discussion of what we need to see in it, and put that back into it there. But it's got to be pretty specific if we're going to do this again. Yeah, but that, it's going to be 22 years before it's finished.
Yeah, I would echo Councilor Phillips in that I think the count, the staff really needs clear direction, so that we don't come back with something that's not going to be passed. And, I mean, the staff is, the staff has worked really, really hard to try and accommodate Mr. Dur, try and answer the questions that the council has, and has tried, and brought forward something that they, although knew was not going to be universally accepted, they thought was potentially, had enough to be able to get passed by the council. But if there's additional changes needed, the guidance here tonight will afford us the ability to make those changes, go through the process, to make the public aware of those changes, and then bring them back in August for your ratification of those changes.
All right. Is there a motion on the recommended changes? What's, what came before us this evening?
Have you closed the public hearing?
Yes.
It's been so long, I forgot.
Remarkably, I remembered.
Well, I guess there's no other idea of wording. I move not to accept the recommended changes in the ordinance before us tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And do you want to ask staff to? Let's do that. Then we'll let the chairman hold a poll and discuss what we'd like to see in it.
Any further discussion? So, we have a motion to not accept the proposed changes to the minor subdivision exemption for Section 7.54, and a second. All those in favor of that motion? Unanimous. But with that said, do councils, does anyone have a recommendation they'd like to make? Well, Council Phillips, you just made a recommendation. Do we want to start there?
That's.
With Council Phillips' recommendation?
Which is mine, was to make minor subdivision exemptions totally. If you read the wording that we had before us, perhaps stop at the chubby exempt from this section.
This is kind of a straw poll of who?
That was my suggestion. Others chime in, please.
Councilor Grant?
I can't make a decision until I know what other communities our size do. That's really what's, what my hand is. So.
Councilor Miller?
There's only 13 communities at the most in the state that do follow any kind of thing that's even close to this mess. All the rest get along just fine without it. I don't know why we can't just get rid of it.
I second that.
I'm pretty much on the same lines. I might, I might give a little bit and say, if they wanted to put like one tank for the subdivision somewhere centrally located, if they really thought they were going to run out of water, and that way, the cost could be spread out quite a bit more effectively. And it's still always an option, if they want to put sprinklers in their house, they can. They don't have to not put them in.
Council Blanchett, do you have any?
Chief, in your experience, how many gallons of water would be needed to put out, say, three-bedroom, two-story home?
You're talking about an 18,000 square foot home. If it's fully involved, you're talking about 600 gallons per minute. And that's just to start. That's not sustained. So, it's very easily, you could use up 10,000 gallons.
16, 17 minutes max.
Yep.
And you're saying that's not enough to, that's to control, but not to?
Correct.
Quality?
Correct.
Even with the use of, you're using foam now, correct?
Yes, this department does use Class A foam, so that does reduce some of the water, the water flow, but till we exhaust the amount of foam that we have on our trucks.
All right. So, even with the foam, that's not an adequate supply?
I think 10,000 gallons would be on the, if we're continuously using foam, 10,000 gallons may be pretty accurate. But once the foam runs out, I would anticipate us needing more water.
And not being a firefighter, is the foam used constantly, or is it an initial attack? Or how is the foam used?
For our initial attack lines, that's what, that's what it's used for, so that we can get in there quickly, knock it down with the Class A foam, and then we utilize water to finish up the rest of the fire suppression efforts.
Okay, and why initially it's in there to do it, then why is it stopped if it does such a good job reducing the fires? The cost, effectiveness, safety?
Well, again, we only carry so much Class A foam on the truck. We carry 800 gallons of water.
Yeah.
But then we only carry so much foam on the truck.
And that's in a liquid form that's mixed, or?
Yes, it's proportioned into the, in through the pump, and we have specific lines on our truck that are able to be foam capable. Not every hand line on our truck is foam capable.
But with the foam, 10,000 gallons is closer to getting us to where we need to be?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Can I ask, so if, say, there was a cistern centrally located in the subdivision, would that be good enough to, like, I mean, most subdivisions are three miles long. In Ellsworth, they're probably a mile, maybe?
You're correct. I mean, we have one subdivision, obviously, that is at least three miles long, but other than that, no. As far as your centrally located cistern, again, our limitation is the length of our supply hose. Each truck carries 1,000 feet, so that's our limitation. Otherwise, we have to start moving water by truck, which increases the time delay. Because now we have to travel to the water, fill, turn around, and come back.
Maybe we're going about this wrong. Instead of having a buried tank, we ought to have a trailer with like 10,000 gallons, and you can hook onto it and tow it to where you're at. It wouldn't cost anymore.
I'll be honest, there are places around the state that do have tractor-trailer trucks that haul water. But again, you start getting into road limitations, so.
Gene, I think, you know, your centrally located is probably a good idea, but realistically, if it is, if it does, and that through planning, they're going to find, if it is a rather large one, it would need more than one.
Well, I just, I thought they always pump it out of the thing into the truck, so we drive the truck to it anyway. I didn't know they put 3,000 feet of line to it, and.
Council Blanchett, Council Phillips, do either one of you support the outright removal of this section of the ordinance? And the reason I ask that is that we have three counselors that are indicating that that's where they would want to go with it.
Total removal of 7.5?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. So, at this point, we have three counselors that would support total removal. We have three counselors that would prefer something different, and we have one counselor that wants to get some more information before making a decision. Council Kaplan?
Why not keep the exemption for minor subdivisions, and for major subdivisions, just give them the first two options, that's it, and eliminate the requirement for the sprinkler systems? If somebody's going to have 20 units to sell, then?
The answer, I initially was thinking with that, but if it's a major subdivision, you can leave the option in there. It is an option.
Yes, but there are.
So, the developer looks at it, and it's the developer's choice.
Right, but there are three to four major subdivisions here that have all opted for.
Yeah, and most of them went the other way, I understand.
They all opted for the sprinklers.
But it's also check the box, if you like it, and if you don't like it, don't check it. I think maybe the only other possibility, I would say, Michelle, maybe if you wanted to the tanks, 1,000-foot rule, may change that a little bit.
How far do you think you couldn't move out with that tank?
I think what my, what I based that on was 2,000 feet between cisterns, which would allow two trucks, if need be, which one cistern right now could potentially cover four to five homes, depending on the size of the lot. If I go with two cisterns, then I can cover more territory with two cisterns than I can with one, but by going to 2,000 feet, I still have the capability to put a truck at a cistern and pump all the way back, as opposed to getting into a truck shuttle, which causes a lot of time and movement, and it doesn't guarantee you that you have your water immediately available. So, my recommendation, if we move forward, would be to go to 2,000 feet between cisterns, which, you know, that's a quarter of a mile.
Now, can we come off the road, say, say, okay, we'll talk about Neville's, I'll say that one, because I have been down there. If you came up there, you can go in and put your first one at 2,000 feet, then the next one at 4,000 feet, and then you have it covered, actually.
And from my perspective, that would be my recommendation, as opposed to putting one at the head of the street, because then you'd have to add an additional cistern into, to make sure you covered the?
Right.
Last residence in the mix. So, if you moved in 1,000 to 2,000 feet, and then started your 2,000-foot spread from there, you could cover with the least amount of cisterns.
I wonder if that would be acceptable with the people who brought it here tonight? The information?
Well, let me ask, Council Miller, how do you feel about that? Does that?
I'm still a solid no on this ordinance.
3,000?
Can I, can I get you?
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted.
Trying to compromise.
Yeah, I can see a compromise, but I can't see doing this to our homeowners that want to move here. I think it's ridiculous. It's absurd. No, I'm not voting for, no. I want it gone.
Council Kaplan, are you firm on the, your position of removing it, or do you?
Well, I was, but until we only had three of us. So, now, now it's better to just compromise, so I get some of what I want.
Welcome to politics.
2,000 feet.
So, yeah, do the cisterns every 2,000 feet still eliminate the sprinkler requirement? Because I just, I hate that.
Mr. Dur, hey, has a question.
So, I can tell you that, and I don't need to interrupt, but I can tell you, we have done that. Bridge Twin, we went in 1,000 feet from, at the new development, put a hydrant in, or put, they put the tank in, so it covers the first 1,000 as well as the second 1,000. The one up off of Christian Ridge, I believe it's Candy Way, we did the same thing with Jordan up there. We went in 1,000 feet, excuse me, went in 1,000 feet, and then it covers, so we're covering 2,000 feet with one tank. So, we have done that already.
But this way, we would even cut that, like, double that. We would be covering 4,000 feet with two.
I suppose, and with all the testimony.
Actually, we'd be covering 6,000 feet with two, right?
Yeah.
2,000, 4,000, and then you wouldn't need another one till you got to 6,000. I think that would be pretty fair.
It would be. With all the testimony we've heard tonight, at least if they had a cistern and had water, and that they worked, it would be better than the fire ponds that are scattered about the city.
Well, you've got one on your subdivision.
Oh, there's 10 or 15 of them. I'm not just the only lucky winner.
There's water in yours.
You can't get it, though.
You can swim in it, though.
Well, I wouldn't swim in it.
It's formerly mine, not mine anymore, honey.
You can swim in it. Come over any time.
It weren't getting landed.
All right.
So, we got 2,000 feet on the cisterns.
So, we have, so.
They're saleable.
So, the major, we still have one counselor that wants more recommend, more information, so that's a piece of that at that point.
As if you want to vote.
No, I know, I know, but it's still being important.
And it's, we're going to be at Christmas, we're going to have to make a decision. Not everyone agrees. So, if we got four that carries it, we've got 2,000 feet, and as far as the minor subdivision exemption, I propose that we clip it at, is exempt.
Is anybody else?
Shall be exempt from this section.
Is anybody else willing to say, get rid of the sprinkler requirement?
I, I don't.
And just give them two options?
I agree with what you're saying, but I think as long as it's an option, as long as it remains just an option, that they have a choice?
Right.
In the matter, they may prefer to take it, but to not, because it doesn't matter. If they don't want to go that direction, they don't have to.
But here's the deal, if I'm a developer, and I have 25 units to sell, and I can sell them, subdivide them, sell them, and not have to put the cisterns in, if I pass that cost on to the homeowner later on down the line, and I've already made my profit, and I'm up and out of there, now every person that buys there is either going to have to come up with extra money to build, or they're just not going to be able to build. And so, by giving them just the first two options, it's spread evenly throughout the subdivision, and it's done right at the beginning, and no price tag surprise at the end.
But they can still put in sprinklers if they want to, right?
Right, if they want to. The homeowner can choose that, if they choose to.
If they choose to put in the sprinklers, then maybe they don't have to put in the cisterns.
No, the cisterns have to be in there before they sell the lot.
Anyway, okay.
And they're already putting in a road, so it's cheaper to put it in while they're building the road anyway.
I personally can live with that, in terms of, as long as there's a water supply for those larger, as long as there's a water supply.
Remove the sprinkler?
I can, I can live with that personally.
Option two out of there, that's, because that were my two notes, Section 5, delete Option 3, and the Section 7.54, and, yeah, then 2,000 feet.
So, I think to be most clear, since you seem to be going in that direction, I think what you want to do in that case is prohibit the use of sprinklers, because if it's just not listed as an option, and someone comes to us and says, what I would like to do is put sprinklers in all of the homes in this subdivision, I'll put it in the deeds, it'll be on the plan, I think that would be an acceptable solution, since it has been in the past.
What is going to prohibit them from putting in a sprinkler system?
Only if you write a prohibition.
We're not doing a prohibition. We're removing the option.
Removing the option does not have the effect of removing the option.
That's right. The cisterns available, that's fine. That meets our city public supply system, whatever. And if that customer, you or anyone else that wants to put a sprinkler system, let them.
Right.
They can have both.
So, they might still do what Council Kaplan is concerned about, and pass that cost on to the homeowner, because it's a.
That's the developer's issue. We can't control everything.
I just wanted to reinforce that.
I think what, I think what Council Phillips is saying is that what we're proposing is that a developer must do one of the two options. They have to do that. They can't substitute that with the sprinkler system.
And if I am profit-based, I'm not going to add in a $30,000 sprinkler system per house, just because I'm feeling nice today. They're going to have to do one or two, but Option 3 is just, the homeowner could choose to do it. Most subdivisions, you're purchasing a home to put on the property, and you do that after you've purchased that land. And in order to purchase that land, you have to comply with A or B, as a developer, to subdivide that land. And that cost is evenly passed throughout all of the sale of all of the different properties, rather than the homeowner having to come up with 30 grand to put in a house.
So, I think it goes back to the comment about the purpose of the ordinance, and what is acceptable to those who have to provide the service of fire protection. So, they can comment on it better than I can, but I just, I don't think removing an option has the effect of removing the option that you think it does.
I'm okay with removing the sprinklers.
2,000 feet would be sufficient with you.
And 2,000.
Okay.
So, let me, let me, based on what I've heard, that we're going to ask city staff to come back, change the 7.5, 7.5.4 minor subdivision exemption. subdivision exemption with a period at, shall be exempt from this section, period. Everything else goes away.
Correct.
And also, for the major subdivision, eliminate the option for sprinkler systems, but have language that mandates one of the other two options. That's the language that we want to come back to us.
With two thousand foot intervals.
With a two thousand foot intervals instead of a thousand. And then that will come back to us, and we will discuss it, review it, it will be another public hearing, and we'll, we'll take that up at that time. Counselor.
That is what other communities our size are doing.
That's true.
Right, no, there's no, bringing it, bringing that language is just an agreement on the language.
Right.
Once it comes back, between now and then, during the discussion, the vote will be what the vote will be, based on that. We do want other information from other communities to be part of that process.
I will get that prior to and have that information to all of you before this other information is even completed.
Counsel Philps.
Mr. Chairman, do you have four votes? I know Heather's on the fence, but before we send them out to go back or something we can't act upon again.
Right now, we do.
So mine is a yes. Yes?
Yes.
Unless some compelling issues surface. So that's where we'll go with it for now, and have it come back that way.
Okay.
All right. Item thirteen, discussion and review of date time of weekly council workshop. So let me just set the stage for this. This is several years ago, and I don't know exactly when. The Finance Committee meets every Friday morning, and the Finance Committee meets for the purpose of reviewing the warrant, approving the warrant, or not approving the warrant, but that has to happen at that time, because that's how the bills get paid by the city. And so that's the job of the Finance Committee to, to have that. And then there was a desire for the council, and at that time, council members were able to attend after the, usually afters, during the Finance Committee, to have a workshop where it gives the city manager an opportunity to present information in terms of just what's going on, to give a heads up. There are no votes taken, there are no motions made, it's really informational. As you all know, the amount of information about the city is extensive, and to have that kind of information heads up helps us to prepare for these meetings and set agendas, et cetera. So I've had several counselors approach me about that time of that meeting, and so that's why it's on the agenda today, to talk about, is there another process where, that we could take hold of that would provide the opportunity for greater participation? So that's why this is on the agenda.
Did you have a day and a time in mind?
I do not. I brought it as requested and wanted left for discussion.
The original intent of that meeting was for the signing of the financials, and it grew into a more of an informational, and that's why it was held on Friday to sign the warrant prior to that, and then more started to come and attend, and it just, at that point, over the last thirty years, became more, there was more, I guess, information out, but not anyone, not everyone always attended, as I haven't been many lately. But what are you going to do with your financials, then, to meet the timeline?
Well, the Finance.
Still hold the Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah, Finance Committee has to be held. That, that can't change because of the needs of the warrant.
It's impossible for anybody that works during the day to be there Friday morning.
Right.
You'd have to take a day off from work to come in for that, or morning at least.
It was an initial thing. Most, most everyone on the council at the time would head up eight to five percent job, and it would meet early in the morning for an hour or so and be gone, so.
I don't know, I'll come up with the adage, why fix it if it ain't broke?
But it is broken.
I don't, I don't see where it is.
Well, yeah, my thoughts.
Broke as, as the, as the adage says, and I'd be in favor of keeping it as it is.
Well, if it's informational and half the council can't be there because we have conflicting work schedules, then it's not all that information. Only half of the council is getting that information.
No matter what you do, you're going to have conflicts. You know, if, if you hold it on Wednesday at three AM, you're going to have conflicts.
I could be there.
I can do it. Are you making a motion?
Truth be known, I could be there also.
So that's three of us?
Keep pushing it, it's on the team.
There's nothing we'd quite like, just being there, though, and.
Well, yeah, it's, because it's recorded, you can hear it, but you won't have the opportunity to speak.
Right.
The other, other methodology, if there is a bunch of information coming out, it's placed in an email and sent to all the councils out of that meeting, synopsis or something else.
That would be nice, you know, just a synopsis of what the meeting's going to be about, what the meeting was about.
Informational, is that?
As long as, as, if we do that, it also has to be available to the public. So just in terms of, we just need to keep that in mind, that if an email like that goes out, if that's part of the workshop, then that, we just need to make sure it's accessible, and people know that they can, can gain access to it.
But that would still have the same data. Miller just said that people could.
Wouldn't have the opportunity to.
And you would need to know what the agenda was ahead of time, and we go post it, and then wait on it.
What time works for you? What time of day? I mean, I guess that would be the only way to go, because those, the three of you are the ones that can't make it at that time, so what time works for you?
Well, it works for me, five, six o'clock at night, but, I mean, that may not work for us, rather. I don't know, do you, do you have stuff every week that you talk about, or does it, like, every couple weeks daily?
Well, I mean, we don't have to meet weekly. It can be any format that, that the council desires.
Like, what if we pick? Like, is there, say, every other week, like on a Thursday night or something, evening? I'm just throwing something out there to see if it worked with anybody else.
You know, between the regular meeting, like tonight, all of the special meetings, all of the committee meetings, all of the union negotiation meetings, I'm meetinged out. And to add another regularly scheduled meeting to it, then I would want to start talking. Counsel, counselors pay. If, if you want to turn it into a regular job, which is what this is sounding like, then we would bring that into it. But it's, we have five days to choose from. Essentially, we have very few times in those five days, and if somebody is inconvenienced because they can't make it because of their work, well, then so be it. It, it just, it is what it is. It's been this way for decades, and until tonight, it's never been an issue. And I'm not going to, going to make it an issue. This would be more a discussion appropriate, I believe, at the organizational meeting in November, not in the middle of the stream where we are here in July.
I think that's fair to wait till November.
It's consistent with the decision around, the Charter does talk about, that's when the organizational meeting is when we set times for this meeting.
Correct.
And everything else, and when Counsel Philps made that point, that swayed me in terms of my decision around that, so it's, it's the same premise, is that that's the time to make those changes. And so that, so I, I could support that as, as the process, but I would also say that what we need to do then is do, do a better job of make, collecting the information. We do get the summary of what Manager Moser is presenting, make sure that that's available and gets sent out to everyone, it's available to the public, and so you'll know the, the topics that have been discussed, and you can then connect with other counselors and/or city staff in the meantime.
That's fair.
So I just maybe add one thing, you know, every now and then, isn't very often, something hot topic comes up that, you know, and ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm going to guess there's not really much comes up. So if there's something, like, let's say the, the houseboat ordinance stuff, and, and even this fire suppression thing, I just kind of would like to get in on the talks about that. I don't care about as much if there's something that's really not all that.
Yeah, it tends to be more presentation than it does in terms of formal action, so I'll give a good example. Superintendent will, maybe twice a year, will come to the Finance Committee to provide some updates on the finances of the school, because we have oversight of, of piece of that. That's informational and is helpful. So that's, that's, gets to your point in terms of just knowing in advance when that's going to happen, so that you have an opportunity to look at your schedules and.
Right. I just, if something's really important, I do want to know everything going on. Obviously, I'm never going to know everything that's going on, but I do want to be as up to snuff on everything as I can.
And a reminder to the public, those are public meetings, they're open to the public.
And, and just to be clear, Counsel, I'll tell you what some of the hot topics are. We'll talk about Counsel Philps and his latest snowmobile shenanigans in the wintertime.
Right.
City Manager Moser and his love of driving onto Cape Cod on a narrow road on July fourth weekend. Or we talk about.
If that's what it is.
Or we talk about the birth of my first granddaughter a couple weeks ago. It's, those really are some of the.
Right. No, I get it.
Some of the important topics that are talked about.
I get it, I just, you know, if there are important, like, important city business issues, that, you know, I do kind of want to.
But you did.
I would also encourage any of the counselors to reach out to me any point during the day on Friday, if you are curious as to what was discussed at the Finance Committee, and I'd be more than happy to, to let you know what, what the topics of the day were. But it is rather informal on most days, and as Dale said, there are occasions when we do have, you know, valuable information, and I can make a, you know, concerted effort to push that in, information out to you all in advance, when I know in advance that someone's, sometimes it's Thursday afternoon that someone comes in with a financial issue, and I say, yeah, I come to Finance tomorrow, so we can just give them a heads up if this is coming down the pike. You know, those type of things do happen, but when we have something in advance, I can push that out in email to everyone to let them know that Friday Superintendent Higgins is coming to the Finance Committee meeting to discuss X, Y, and Z, and just give you advanced notice that that's going to happen.
That's fair.
Okay. Great. With that, is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I can't, I can't.
On paper?
We're adjourned.